Okay, are we, we're live?
We are live.
And nobody's online. We can't tell if anybody's on the other, whatever it is, YouTube. Is that what that's on?
I mean, I can expand the screen, but there's, there's people there.
Okay, well, great. So when you're Can you expand so we can? So we can welcome them? Just so I can see who's here.
Yes, one second.
Sorry.
Man of many hats.
Yeah, we're a little shorthand.
Okay, so like to welcome everybody to our workshop for tonight. Looks like we have, I still can't see who's. Okay, yeah, looks like there's Eileen as well. So just wanted to see who all was out there. Welcome to our workshop tonight, which is affordable housing. Hey, that's, sorry, I just needed to see who was.
You might want to go ahead and share your screen again.
I like to know who's watching.
I get it. There you go.
Yeah, can't you like put them? Hey, Michael.
All right, you ready?
Go for it.
So, all right. Good evening, Mayor, Board Trustees. I'm Michael Brack, your Assistant Town Manager for Frazier. I'm going to be providing you with a workshop, a housing workshop. And last time we did this, I believe it was September. And so we have some good stuff to talk about. We even have some, some good things to talk through and even look for some direction towards the end of this. So as you can see, this is the house that had in the last workshop. We've had some new windows and a new door added. So the price has gone up for that $200,000.
Seems, seems like a bargain.
Steel right there.
It's a two-story.
That's a solid investment. So just quickly, just an update regarding land acquisition status. We are under contract for the purchase of the Victoria Village subdivision. That contract price is 3.8 million. Our contract offer is contingent on procuring funds from the Operation Turnkey Grant Program for funding in the amount of just over $3 million with a required 20% matching funds from the town of Frazier and the amount of $760,000. That will come from the community housing fund. So the grant termination date, when we will find out whether or not we will be awarded those funds is on, sorry, Mike. Make sure you click the right box.
Somebody did an update somewhere.
So we will find out in the end of February whether or not we're going to be awarded. So that will be in the form, if we are awarded, we will be receiving a letter of intent from the Operation Turnkey Division of Housing Staff to basically just confirm that we will receive those awards and and that is something that we actually will, will use and provide the property owner to continue towards the closing process. We anticipate if, if we are awarded that, those grant funds, we should have cash in hand sometime in May. So anticipated beginning to mid-May with a closing date on our contract of May 20th. So it's very exciting, so.
The day St. Helen's Blue.
Don't jinx it.
Seriously.
All right, this is an update on the Regional Housing Authority work that's been being done. We did meet with Holland Hart, our legal team, who is pushing forward a lot of our, our legal work, our initial research and feasibility. They will eventually be creating our founding documents for the special district, which is the multi-jurisdictional Regional Housing Authority District. And so we have some anticipated dates right now. January 28th, we should have the, the feasibility part of this done to make sure that we can successfully do this legally. We can do it right. That it will be able to create a district that is bondable and be able to take advantage of many of the benefits that come with the Housing Authority. Phase two, you can see there is drafting of the founding documents for the Regional Housing Authority. That is anticipated for completion on February 4th. And right now, we do have an anticipated combined meeting date. Per your approval of March 7th, that it will be a combined meeting with Winter Park Council Frazier Board of Trustees, the Granby Board of Trustees, and the Grand County Board of County Commissioners to review the, the founding documents that has, have been drafted by our legal team, Holland Hart. And we will be doing some engagement before then to see, to allow each, each member and municipality the opportunity to have their attorneys look at it and go through it carefully. So we don't get in the event, similar with the MOU, which we have later on tonight, where someone requests a part of that agreement to be amended. And then everybody else has to go back and sign it, who's already signed it and kind of have to start over. So we will have a really good ramp up process to allow the trustees and the attorneys time to review the documents before that combined meeting. So we will not be presenting new information. It'll really just be confirmation that everyone is on the same page or not on the same page. And, and then moving forward from there. Phase three is is the final approval from the Regional Housing Authority members following that meeting that is anticipated for later in March there. And that'll be the stamp of approval from all the members for the founding documents, which are required to stand up that special district. And also to include the Regional Housing Authority District boundaries that have been identified. And I will show you those proposed boundaries here in just, just a moment. And then phase four, we do have a, that does have to go to the state for special district approval. And then we will be looking at beginning the ballot initiative process. After, of course, identifying what the actual ballot initiatives that we want to go after. The main idea and methodology right now is, is pursuing a mill levy with these district boundaries that is subject to change. But that is what has been demonstrated well with other large overlapping multi-jurisdictional regional housing authorities. And, and that's what I will show you a map of here now. So we expect that state approval sometime in April or May. That'll set us up so that we can pursue that ballot initiative for November 20, later this year.
So, Michael, this is on the agenda late, right?
The MOU? Yes.
Should we discuss this now or then?
I would recommend discussing it then. Because I will be able to walk you through that document and tell you new changes and we can discuss anything that needs to happen there. Right, so. Stop sharing. So these are the proposed Regional Housing Authority District boundaries. So this is direct district, which is the large blurb here. And actually, that rec district actually does cut into the, the town of Granby already. And so the proposed district is the rec district, the Frazier Metropolitan Recreation District boundaries plus the town limits of the town of Granby. And based on those town limits, you can see here an area to the assessed valuation total is about 650 million in property evaluation. And that's what will help us determine if a mill levy is the, the funding mechanism for this larger regional housing authority. We will be able to use that number to figure out what makes the most sense as far as getting this off the ground, getting voter approval and actually getting some, some, some funding going as far as housing initiatives in the valley. You want to have any questions so far?
The discontinuous area, is that just a?
It is a contiguous area. It does connect here to Granby and then, so like the rec district boundaries, if you can see my mouse. It goes up to about right here, which is within the town limits of Granby.
The, the little thing in the corner there talks about discontinuous area.
Oh. Um. This reflects the town limits of, of Granby. It looks like they have some, some goofy stuff going on there, right?
They have, they have a few, they have a few enclaves, which means they have not been annexed into the town. They're still within the county, but they would still be covered under this, under this, this district boundary.
All right, I will continue if there are no questions. Okay, so moving on. So one of the major things that was discussed last workshop and that has been requested since then, as well as some further analysis on some proposed funding mechanisms that can be used for Frazier initiatives, not to be confused with the Regional Housing Authority initiatives. We'll get into what, you know, the different various things that Frazier, the town of Frazier could use their funding streams for as far as housing initiatives go. But for these next three slides, four slides, we're going to cover short-term rental registration fees and excise tax and the impact fees. Discuss those in a little bit of depth and and then we'll, we'll play around with those numbers a little bit and kind of show you what our projections are looking like. So last time I gave you this workshop, we actually had about 155 short-term rentals in the, within the town limits of Frazier. We are now at about 243 as of today. And currently, there is about 56 of, of 56 short-term rentals that are non-licensed right now that are operating. So about 19% of our short-term rental homes, residents here in Frazier are not registered. Which brings the total to 299.
What are we doing about those?
I'm sorry, Andy.
What are we doing about those?
So we are working on an enforcement process and something that I'm going to recommend for tonight is something that we discussed back last fall, when we were looking at working with, considering the, the short-term fixed program that Winter Park adopted. And it just, it didn't seem like a good time to look at revisiting the, the registration fees or a penalty structure. Until we actually had worked out if that was something that the town of Frazier was going to pursue. That short-term fix was basically a subsidy to convert a short-term rental to a long-term rental. You may recall that last fall, last winter time, or late fall. So now that we had figured out that that's not the direction that Frazier wants to go, I will be recommending an ordinance that's really already drafted to be presented poss, potentially at the next meeting or the meeting to follow that, which does recover a penalty structure for people who do not register their short-term rentals. That actually reflects what Grand County has been doing for their, their penalty structure for short-term rentals as well. And that'll be, that's what we recommend as a penalty structure. So I'll actually get to that here in just a little bit. So I will show you what we're, what we're thinking with that. So currently, our short-term registration fee is $150 flat per residence. Doesn't matter if that's a town home or a condo. That is, the flat fee is $150, no matter if you have a 5,000 square foot home in Rendezvous or a 500 square foot place in the I'm drawing a blank, but that we have some small units here. So 2022, our short-term rental projected registration revenue is about, it's just shy of 45,000. So that's basically 243 times 150. And we expect that to be more, especially with the penalty structure in place. The current cost of the short-term rental software is 15,200. So the main reason that the short-term registration fee was imposed to begin with was to cover the fees with our, our software to actually manage the short-term rentals and be able to identify who doesn't have one, who we needed some letters to and things like that. So that shows the remaining revenue of about 29,000 right now.
So how does our $150 fee compare to other people's registration for short-term rentals, other?
Other municipalities?
Yeah.
So they're all over the place. I actually have several examples here. A lot of, well, I'm kind of walking through a couple there local here. Town of Granby, for example. To register a three-bedroom resident is $400 plus $100 application fee, so 500 for a three-bedroom.
Is that an annual fee?
That's an annual fee, correct.
Ours is only 150 per annual fee?
Ours is only 150.
It's just a flat rate per bed. It's not per bedroom.
Right. And what I'm, what I've kind of drawn up some numbers here is kind of proposing, if you were to look at a fee per bedroom. This is a good example of what that could look like. You know, you can always alter what the flat fee is. You can alter what the cost per bedroom is. But basically here, the, the first section on this slide is if you were to register a three-bedroom short-term rental at $100 per bedroom. So if you took $150 of the flat fee, the flat registration fee, and you charged them $100 per bedroom, you would be looking at $450 to register your three-bedroom short-term rental. And if you did it at $150 a bed, 150 plus the 150 per bedroom would be 600 for a three-bedroom short-term rental. And at 200, you'll be looking at 750. Does those, those numbers make sense?
Does anyone do it by square foot? Dollar square foot? Can I maybe do that?
No, that's, that's hard to keep track of, especially with people doing additions and renovations. So
easier than the bedrooms, no?
Well, you can find the bedrooms in the property assessment software.
Right. Right. Does it ever get inspected? Right, okay, gotcha.
And the same for what our software does, that pulls from 12 different advertising agencies. And they do look, we can't look for the, it does say with the number of bedrooms is advertised for that short-term rental. So you are able to, yeah, basically bounce the data and confirm it. Sure.
Because they have bunk rooms.
And the only thing I've thought about with the pillows is, I mean, is that a difficult thing for them to charge? I guess you might know that, Philip. But is that a difficult thing for them to change on their, on their posting? Basically bring down the occupancy rate and then register their short-term rental and then raise it back up?
You, you can cheat the system.
Yeah.
I mean, you can, I mean, look at, you, you can have, you could say there, there's actually condos out there that are actually being built in our community that are a one-bedroom with a bonus. Yeah. And that tree that sleeps is a two-bedroom.
Right.
So they're, you know, they're, they're getting around a two-bedroom. So you can cheat the system no matter what, so.
There's sofa couches, you know.
Just do ridiculous.
I actually like the per person over the the bedroom, because when you start jamming, you know, 12 people into a two-bedroom, that's when you're having the nuisance. You're having that, that space camp handle.
That's one of the party problems.
Then that's gonna like
Well, there's, the county, the county does it that way. So that software, I think we use the same, do we use the same?
We do use the same.
It looks at your listing and it says how many people are on your list. So it's got to be able to track that somehow.
The software that compares it to what they said before, like, it's like a running, it's trying to randomly pick.
Yeah, it's able to pull live data from the postings and stuff like that.
That's cool.
So, Michael, is anybody based it on income?
On income?
Sales tax records on these, right? I mean, they have to pay sales tax on there.
So
Lodging tax, though.
Groups of all the sales taxes all grouped together for, like my sales tax license is all grouped together.
That goes to the county, though. That's not a benefit to Frazier.
See what they're making per unit.
Yeah, but then you're, then you're wrestling with the county on. So they, they have those funds dedicated towards their Office of Economic Development and Tourism. So the only way that Frazier would be able to impose and collect lodging tax like Winter Park is to become a home rule municipality, which doesn't benefit.
If you don't want to forget, we do want guests to welcome here.
Absolutely.
You need so many people per year to come and stay.
So we also need the people to be able to accommodate them, or they're not going to come back next time. We don't have eggs. They're going to be like, I'm out. Or they went in line for an hour to eat, you know? They just try it once and leave and they'll never come back again.
But this is not unique to the town of Frazier or even Grand County or even, you know, resort communities. I mean, this is everywhere.
Right.
So the one advantage to income-based, if we could, and I, I know we can't, can't break it out publicly, but I can answer that, break it out as a matter of both keeping. So
No, you can't, because Airbnb collects all the sales tax for all the listings. And then the, the state of Colorado and then it puts in a lump sum payment. You would never, you'd never be able
Based on location, obviously.
The bottom line is too, that we have a really low fees compared to everyone else.
Right. And, and Andy, to your point, that's something that we'll talk about next, which is more related to an excise tax, which would be able to directly, you know, whatever the gross revenues that they make off their short-term rental, they would have to pay that larger or smaller amount in excise tax, which is just another name for sales tax. That's directly towards.
Is that a person wants to just do this very part-time, you know, just, just holiday period, that sort of thing. The flat fee is, can, can be onerous for a person that's not doing it on a scale type basis. So it sounds like it's just not possible mechanically. So, yeah, okay.
So we're going to make decisions on this tonight? We're just discussing?
You're going to discuss, and I think some direction would be great for us to kind of pursue. I think it's, it'd be good to have you guys answer some, some hard questions tonight, you know? But just, just, we're looking for direction, some feedback on what you're thinking. And there's nothing concrete tonight, but it'd be good just to progress that conversation.
So I think that the, just the per bedroom fee would be the easiest for the town to administer in terms of tracking it and charging.
Pillow counts on our websites.
The same, it's the same thing.
Yeah. So just from an administration aspect of this, Antoinette manages our short-term rental fee program and so forth. It's overwhelming for one person to do that, especially our Kirk, who's doing all of our agendas, the meeting minutes, all the liquor licensing, business licenses and so forth. So we're actually looking at how do we better support, you know, whatever, whatever program we institute. Well, I probably have to have somebody dedicated that can assist with that and also take over some of those, those business licenses as well. But that's, that's a separate matter. Again, this is just the first, you know, you talked about having multiple streams of income and so forth. This is just one of those. This is one that, that I've encouraged because the advantage of a, of a registration fee is that this Board of Trustees by a resolution or an ordinance can implement those fees. The other two that he's going to talk about, you're going to have to go into a vote for the voters, because now you're talking about implementing a tax and so forth. So so this, this one, this one is something that we could do quickly, whatever we decide to do as far as, you know, whether we, whether it's pillow tax, we look at the number of people or simply just stick to a veteran tax. You know, I just want to make that point. It's annuals, we can change it next year.
But the counties down, what, what did they say? 30% on their staff level or something like that, something crazy?
Yeah.
And they're, they're using the same software in their evil to administer the per person fee.
Right.
So, and I'm in this business. And where the trouble comes is where you pack a bunch of people in, in, into the home. It's not, it's not like the four-bedroom or the three-bedroom that, you know, has got two people in a bedroom. It's, you know, the, the three-bedroom that has, that sleeps six or eight in a bed.
Right.
So then that's based on what they advertise is their maximum occupancy?
Yeah.
The VRBO, let's say.
Being around a while, the, what happens is it says it's a two-bedroom, four people could sleep there.
Right.
12 college kids get together and they rent. They all come up because they don't care if they sleep on the floor.
But the contracts, you know, that with VRBO, I mean, some of them, they're really clear on contracts. If they say you may not have more than this number of people.
I mean, if you, if you're a good, if you're a good property manager, you know, because we, we have, we have devices that that, that monitors the noise level. And, and, and so you know that there's a party going on. We text, we send them a text and there's no more party going on because they've agreed to the rules.
Right.
I think we can look at, at, at the occupancy rate and how we can apply that based on our software and maybe come up with some numbers of what that looks like when we actually do come to a, we're making recommendations. I think what's going to be more important, though, is, is establishing what our goals are, what our targets are as far as to support our town-based initiatives for affordable housing. Right now, we're putting 700 and three-quarters of a million dollars a year into our budget for affordable housing. And that $750,000 could be used for street projects or that we, we lack, those are, our street budget is always short. So I would be asking that we find a way to maybe replace that fund, that money from the general fund for the taxpayers and put the burden on those people who are doing the short-term rental fees instead of all taxpayers. And then earmark that other money for something else. But we have to figure out what that target amount is. And I think the bottom of this slide illustrates that, just on this example, the cost per bedrooms, based on our current occupancy, is that, is that correct?
So yes, this is, this is based on the composition of one, two, three, four-bedroom short-term rentals that we have registered. The current number of, of short-term rentals and what those total revenue streams will look like per year. Based on just this model, which again, these are just numbers to play with, right? These are just examples. But cost per bedroom, 100, 150 and 200. And then they're at the bottom and flat registration fee stays the same, making those assumptions. This is the revenue streams that you could expect every year, and that would likely grow just, you know, as economic conditions progress. Time value money.
At the moment, it's 45,000 we get in fees.
Right, just shy of 45,000.
But we net about 28,000 because we have to pay for the software. But we net about twenty eight thousand because we have to pay for the software.
Is the software an annual fee or is it just a one time?
Feel like if we raised the fees, I think that we would almost make forty five thousand extra in sales tax. We had people here to sell stuff. Employees that could actually, you know? I think that that's that's kind of, I think it just needs to be raised because forty five thousand isn't that much. Does it to you, Ben?
Yeah.
I think.
It's partially leveling playing field a little bit at least between people who like holiday and and their commercial tax rates. And and their presidential tax rates on a on a on a short term route. So it's helping to level that playing field just a little bit at least.
Right. Yeah, I mean, the town of Grand Lake, they have a flat six hundred registration fee every year. Town Crested Butte, they do seven hundred fifty flat fee and they just increased their excise tax from five to seven point five. So they actually have they actually have several revenue streams that go towards housing projects. They're pretty aggressive after this stuff.
And the Crested Butte voters pass that excise tax, right?
Correct. So that excise would need to go on a ballot initiative for for voter approval. And just kind of like what Ed, you know, echoing what he said, as far as, you know, implementation, obviously the the registration fees is one of the most is is the most feasible option as far as increasing any kind of revenue towards these initiatives. Excise taxes, we'll get to the with the next slide, is requires a vote to the people, but also could be very can put a pretty solid dent into affordable housing. So did anyone have any more questions about the registration fees?
This is the only revenue stream that doesn't have to be approved by the by the voters.
Correct.
This is the only one we can do like.
Registration fees, yes. And uh and I we were my, our desire is to bring to you, if you, if there is a desire to change the registration fees. Also, within that same meeting, we could look at adopting an ordinance for a penalty structure for those who we can clearly identify within the town limits of Frazier that they are operating, they're advertised and then they are booking short term rentals and they are not currently registered. Uh use a short, their short term registration has expired or it was never stood up in the first place.
I think we want to look at, I I would like to look at increasing these fees. That was a question and moving forward with that.
And we'll we'll summarize this all at the end. So just something to start thinking about and just like what Ed said, something we'll talk about later is what is an annual amount of revenue that we could we can push for some initiatives with?
Real quick, what is the, do you happen to know what the penalty is in Crested Butte for the people who don't register?
In Crested Butte?
Or whatever another town that you.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna recommend Grand County. So they have the first violation is a warning, you know? These all have increments of thirty days. So if they continue advertising and booking, which we can pull from our software, the second violation is a five hundred dollar fine. Uh the third violation is a thousand dollar fine. And the fourth violation is the short term rental permit may be revoked or suspended for a period of one year. So that's what Grand County has stood up. And we think that that's a good penalty structure, at least for to start with, that will encourage people to actually follow through because it's very people are much more motivated to set up their short term rental on an advertising website than they are to follow through with a short term registration process with the town of Frazier. And I get it, but it has to be encouraged and enforced, right?
So what what's the sales tax violation that they're that they're doing by being unregistered? If they're not paying sales tax, that's a fairly serious.
So they will still pay sales tax because it's administered through like Airbnb.
It's already registered on these sites.
So they'll they'll still pay sales tax.
Right.
They're just not registered with a town.
Gotcha.
So there's definitely a difference there. They can still operate their short term rental without any hiccups if there's no enforcement from the town.
Right.
Right.
So.
So we don't really have many independents that are just right in their own place or anything, so.
So again, Michael mentioned this earlier, you know, as far as how you can have a lodging tax. If you're a home rule community, you can also collect your own sales taxes as well. So if there was a tax, like an excise tax, which is what Michael's going to talk about next. That would be collected by the state and returned to us unless we're home willing, decided to self collections. Typically, you generate a little bit more money because the state doesn't have to take their cut for doing that. Anyway, but keep us on track there, Mike.
Yeah, so the next thing that we'll discuss is the excise tax. There are numerous municipalities that are comparable to Frazier that have this tax in place. You know, if they are a home rule and they are able to take advantage of a lodging tax, you know, they typically will have that in place as well. But excise tax is basically just a directed tax that's very, it's exactly what we have tailored to marijuana sales, for example. So we have a specific excise tax for marijuana. Don't ask me what it is, but we have an excise tax for that. That's actually mandated by the state. And so that excise tax already exists for for things that we actually sell in Frazier. The excise tax is tailored directly towards a certain service or product. And that's basically how that works. So you can, we would basically look at different ordinance that's been adopted. We're not reading the venting the will here. But basically drafting a lot of language that's worked in the past and providing some tailorship to Frazier is what we would do if we were to adopt an excise tax. Of course, it requires voter approval, so there will be a ballot process with that. Twenty twenty two, so in twenty twenty one, we were at about just shy of, I think it was around eleven million dollars in gross revenue. So we're actually able to pull this from our short term rental software is what the total bookings, the gross revenue collected is. Based on the increase that we've seen with the STRs, we anticipate about fifteen million dollars in gross revenues from the short term rental market here and within the town limits of Frazier. So based on that fifteen million, a two point five percent excise tax, for example, will be three seven, three hundred seventy five thousand a year. Five percent, about seven fifty.
Can that be passed on the tax beyond the entire new housing authority area that we're talking about or?
That is something that we're actually considering as well. So that'll be definitely something that's evaluated for this district as well.
To me, I think that'd be easier to sell with the voters and a ballot the increase.
Sure.
Plus a mill levy increase, I I really think we've got to preserve for for town needs, general needs that we have with waters, water infrastructure, so.
There are some advantages to the mill levy for the housing authority because of that combined six hundred and something million dollar valuation. That can generate three to four million dollars a year for the regional housing authority.
Get a combination of the two possibly.
You know, this can be tailored. If you're looking for multi-stream effect, your your bedroom count could be lower if it's combined with an excise tax, you know, you've got that property tax levy that would that would be over the housing authority district, which generate revenues just for that authority. So these are simply just some revenue examples of what we would do just for Frazier initiatives. And and to put it that perspective, you know, we just, our cost for this Victoria Village, if we get the grant equates just about the amount of money that we budgeted for this year for community housing, almost eight hundred thousand dollars. So any any purchase, any kind of improvements of land, environmentalists, whatever initiatives that we put together for affordable housing just within Frazier own initiative, it's going to cost a substantial amount of money. So you're gonna have to figure out what is a good target area and what can our budget be? So yes, you can see the five percent excise tax would pretty much replace what we're currently currently budgeting out of the general plan.
Do you have any idea what the STR rental rate, uh return is in the entire housing authority district or we're talking about?
The return, like the gross revenue? We would have to work with the county.
Yeah.
Town of Granby, I don't even know if the town of Granby has short term rental software. I can I can ask them about that, though.
Yeah.
Um and Winter Park, they just stood theirs up recently, just like the county did. We're we're actually the the veterans per se for short term rental software. Especially Antoinette, our town clerk and and we we definitely have more experience with this than anybody else does. And I think a lot of them are still ramping up, one, getting dedicated staff with the town of Winter Park. I think they did just finally hire somebody. They add some to their finance department to help manage the short term rental software, licensing inspections, if they do inspections. But they actually have a dedicated staffer to do that along with some other accounting work. So we we can work with them and and figure that out. I think that's part of our anticipated process that we're working through as far as comparing a mill levy and different types of revenue streams that could be used within that district. But yeah, that's definitely something that's been of conversation. And it's something that our our legal team is looking into. So an impact fee has been discussed before. And just a note there, based on the annexation agreements with Grand Park and with Rendezvous, the planned development districts. They are based on those, the verbiage and those annexation agreements, they are exempt from any impact fees currently and in the future. That is in the in turn reliant on different other parts of the agreement that they have to abide to. So that's just something of note there.
Michael, does that expire at the end of the, is it twenty twenty four?
Twenty twenty eight, I believe, is when that annexation agreement expires. And and yeah, they would have to have met their requirements listed to be exempt from those impact fees as described in their annexation agreement.
Even past the expiration date.
So if they don't, if they don't meet the requirements for, I I believe it's affordable housing or so much, so many units they had to provide by the deadline of that that expiration of that annexation agreement. It could provide some leverage as far as renegotiating an annexation agreement to include impact fees.
But if they need that they meet that requirement, then even after the expiration, then an impact fee couldn't be leveraged.
Correct. In theory, I mean, this is, you're asking me some legal questions here and I'm trying to answer them the best I can.
All I can say is right now, if an impact fee, which was once in place and it was rescinded, the impact fee would not affect Grand Park or Rendezvous. So that would, and and I don't, I can't predict what happens in in six years. So the only people that impact fee would would affect is the people outside of those two organizations. So and he has some examples of what that is, but it's a very small number.
So that impact fee covered both residential development and new commercial development. Uh for new commercial, you're looking at, I'm sorry, for new residential, you're basically looking at three dollars and forty cents per square foot. Uh new commercial buildings, you're looking at three dollars and thirty cents per square foot. There are some examples there, a single family home. Seventeen hundred square feet would pay about five thousand seven hundred eighty dollars for that impact fee, a duplex totaling three thousand of of finished square feet. They'll be looking at just over ten thousand dollars for that impact fee. And there's that last example for new commercial building at five thousand would be about sixteen thousand five hundred would be that fee.
And one more thing to consider, you know, I've only been here about seven months now. So we've seen several proposals that came up on on different different properties. There's been an affordable housing discussion with with all of these. And to make it affordable, you really want to lower those costs to the to the builder. And typically, what we do is we waive fees. So again, if you've got somebody that's putting in a duplex or town homes and they want to make it affordable housing, you know, to charge, you know, twenty to twenty five thousand dollars for an impact fee when they're building affordable housing. So they would be exempt from the impact fees as well. So you know, I'm just saying from my from my view, thinking about the types of development that come here. I don't foresee impact fees generating much revenue. It'd be a little bit, but but not much.
Yeah, and I think the the fatal flaw, I mean, I was the one that brought this up. The fatal flaw is that it just creates an unlevel playing field between the right town and the and the annexation areas.
Right.
So and and I think, you know, obviously we could waive it for anybody to put a deed restriction on their bedrooms, but still, it just doesn't get around that. Unlevel playing field. So perhaps this is one we keep in the quiver and to get closer to the the expiration date. Um of these annexation agreements, we look hard at whether that that could be done across the board in Frazier, a long time, long time from now.
I get that. All all of these proposals have have pros and cons, you know, getting back to the the short term rental fees. Yes, the town can pass that through an ordinance. We can implement that very quickly. The same thing with the impact fees. That's a that's an ordinance. It's not a vote.
Yeah.
So that's the advantage. One can bring in a level of income that we're talking about anywhere from, you know, a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars. Impact fees would also have a lower income. The excise tax has the highest, but again, the con is you have to go to the voters to get approval. And then you have to actually time that as well because if if the regional housing authority is going forward with a property tax levy, you don't want to have another tax question on there that's dealing with affordable housing. Like an excise tax for affordable housing because you may run into the situation where somebody says, well, I think this one's good, so I don't need to vote for that one when most of you knew both of them. And because it's two different organizations, but people won't see that about just make a gut call. So timing of of tax questions is very important.
So regarding funding, these are some of the different ways that we, not all the ways, but these are some examples of what those types of funding could go towards to support housing initiatives. Obviously, we have land acquisition, which we're excited about right now. Housing acquisition and rehab. There's also really strong grant programs that go towards acquisition of old deteriorating properties and doing a major rehab on those on those projects. We obviously have the deed restriction program here in Frazier that could go towards encouraging more people, more homeowners to actually buy into the deed restriction program for a fair price. Water and sewer infrastructure could be used just for extension of our infrastructure in areas that maybe are not built out quite yet within the town of Frazier, but also outside of the town of Frazier without the town service agreements that can help provide affordable housing. You can also use those for planned investment subsidies for affordable housing, something that's been discussed time and time again here is encouraging discounts for affordable housing development or even smaller development for planned investment fees. Something that we we definitely recommend and are and have echoed before is it's it's definitely, if we can put ourselves in a position to subsidize those planned investment fees, if somebody is doing an affordable housing project, for example, it keeps our enterprise funds protected and whole and helps us with our sustainable planning for capital projects related to water sewer. These funds can also be used for gap funding for private and affordable housing development. Again, large, there's there's a few buckets of DOLA Division of Housing Funding that go along with this. Basically just making it economical for someone to build a housing development and whether they're using the entire project or a percentage of that project towards dedicated towards affordable housing under our deed restriction program, for example, making it economical for them so that we can actually help meet the gap where it doesn't make financial sense for them to do that. So that could put us in a good position there with future development. Enhanced maintained housing projects. Partnership opportunities, obviously with the regional housing authority, I think there will definitely be some opportunities there for us. And I, you know, there's a lot of different ways that the town, especially if if there's a property within town boundaries where that regional housing could partner with the town through an IGA to really establish a good list of incentives to drive down those costs to make it affordable, make affordable projects for homeownership and rental. And then also those funds can be used for consultation help for 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 housing development plans. You'll see those in a lot of these different municipalities that actually have dedicated funding streams. Town of Crested Butte, for example, they do an annual housing plan that they update every year to show what they're planning on doing for that that year. Uh it's actually pretty cool because they, here's what we want to do. Are you guys good with that? They get their stamp of approval and they move forward. So that works really well. So as far as developing a system for housing initiatives and meeting those challenges, that's a good avenue to to take.
Did you guys look at, you know, reducing the water fee, monthly fee for the water tap, sewer and water taps?
Like the quarterly or the?
Yeah.
They're doing a a study. A rate study, right? Adam's gonna cover that or not?
No, he's gonna cut.
No, he's going to cut it, sort of the EQR. Study that we just did that talks about how many sewer taps we can sell. We have it, the rate study is, is kind of in the next steps. Of what we need to do, once we complete the study and finish the industrial pretreatment program, then a rate study would be, would be beneficial. We also have to put together our tenure capital plan. The rate study then kind of ties that all together, so. We have not thought about. Discounting water rates for affordable housing. It just hasn't come up on our radar yet.
Because somebody mentioned that Winter Park is looking at raising the water fees for everybody else in those long-term housing. I don't know if that's true, I haven't talked to my park, nobody was in the office.
Not about that.
Yeah, there's, there's definitely several areas that we haven't visited, just because we haven't really had the opportunity to visit them. If we had an affordable housing project, hopefully we do here in the short term. That we can look at these different types of incentives and ways to drive down costs to include property tax abatement and just other tools that you can use to help fund and enhance that property.
And when Michael and I attended the Housing Colorado Conference last October. Chap was talking about, Chap, what's that acronym stand for?
Colorado Housing Finance Authority?
Finance Authority. They were talking about some steps that municipalities can do to have streamlined affordable housing projects. We've discussed that internally, we have not had a chance to delve into that, to start getting, we wanted to start making recommendations for implementation. But some of those suggestions they talked about was. Some of, abating some of the fees or waiving or putting in the payment plan. Expediting approval processes for affordable housing. There's, there's a list there and I can't remember all of those, but we'll be exploring that. As we go forward. But how can we, how can we make this, at the end run, you're trying to make this. Easier for that developer or that, that builder who's coming to do that project. How can you lower their costs, get them making money faster? So therefore hopefully get that cost of that construction down to a certain point that they could market it to read that, read that. Eighty to a hundred twenty AMI. Focus that things like light tech programs are looking for, so.
Yeah, and just on that, that Housing Colorado Conference that we went to last fall. We were the only people from municipality able to get in there because we registered early. Even one of the people that are on this call, AJ with Winter Park, they were actually, they told us about the conference and we registered, they registered later, they, they couldn't get in. So it was actually full of developers who are taking advantage of the non-competitive four percent light tech projects, the nine percent, the different types of housing. You know, affordable housing tools that municipalities are rolling out, so there's a ton of federal funding that's trickling down to the state. For these different types of initiatives, whether it's land acquisition, which is a brand new opportunity that we're obviously taking advantage of. And rehab and just new development, so there's a lot of funds that have been provided to the state for these types of initiatives. And that's one of the reasons that that conference is full of developers who are very interested in affordable housing, so. There's, when we publish, if we procure Victoria Village, we're going to publish an RFP and we expect a strong response, so. Some of the recommendations that we kind of concluded after looking at these different funding sources. You know, the main thing that Ed alluded to before was to identify, you know, your, your, your housing revenue goals that you would like to have annually, to be able to put towards housing initiatives. And then designing the funding streams to meet those goals. We recommend starting with the short term registration fees just because of the feasibility for implementation. And then we'll look at bringing, with that, that resolution, we'll be looking at an ordinance for adoption too, for a penalty structure to complement that. And excise tax on short term rentals, it definitely has demonstrated, demonstrated a lot of success throughout Colorado. But like we discussed earlier, is you want to be careful with that about initiative timing, especially when we're looking at a larger initiative that's being pushed forward to the voters this November, through the Regional Housing Authority. Impact fees, they are not required currently or in the future by two planned development districts include Grand Park and Rendezvous. So something to consider there as far as making things equitable with other builders in the town limits of Frasier. And then just, you know, the, the major benefit that was discussed as well. To these dedicated funding streams, it does allow us to take that money that we had otherwise used from a budget surplus. And put that towards different projects going on in town where there's definitely a need. And, and be able to have dedicated revenue streams to support affordable housing initiatives. Not saying that we can't take a budget surplus and put it towards housing, but we got other stuff going on too, right? So it'd be great to keep things moving forward and different projects and initiatives in Frasier. So. I have. A little fun idea here. So, someone want to throw out a goal? Let's just go for it, right? Again, this is just looking for some, provide some conversation. But let's figure out what we, what's the general idea? Who wants to throw out a number first for an annual revenue that you would like to see for housing initiatives every year?
Two million?
Two million?
One million.
One million?
No, it's funny, we've been talking about property acquisition, we haven't talked about actually, you know, building. And, and you, you mentioned all the programs available and Park's been challenged by those and. We've, we've seen how complicated they are and one of the first things we do is try and sort through all of that. But there, there's just this huge gap between the cost of building and what people can afford. And we're going to have to help bridge that if people are going to get housed, so.
Advantages of owning the land is that we can dedicate the land in a partnership with a developer. You know, you take four, four million dollars off the cost of that project right off the bat. That's, that's greater than any kind of waiving fees that, that the town can do. We don't have enough, we don't have four million dollars for the fees.
I still think Cornell's closer with two million dollars.
And again, we're looking at every year to bring into.
So there will be, just to keep this in mind as to, as well, one of the things that we did pick up at the Housing Colorado Conferences. Is the nexus between the need and the fees. So choosing a target that might be arbitrarily high, like a two million dollar, you know, could be challenged. You know, because they'll say, okay, what do you need the two million dollars for other than just building up your coffers? We do have some history in the fact that, that we've put up one point. One million five hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the past two years, and we're basically using half of that with, with one project. So there is a high cost associated with that, but again, I think you'll have to. Keep it realistic to be defensive.
Well, it's like two million is realistic.
If I be.
That's, I mean, two million, just looking at the numbers that you pulled up is a. It's a big stretch. It's a really big stretch.
It's a big stretch.
You're talking about five percent excise tax. Three quarters of a million and then our, our fees was what? How much is that?
For the short term rentals, even if we did two hundred a bedroom, it would be one seventy-five.
That's half, you're talking about ten percent excise tax and.
I said we get rid of the warning. Get rid of the warning shot, so just five hundred bucks immediately as soon as they, they know they're doing wrong and they're not registering.
That five hundred dollars is not going to solve two, two million.
I know, just saying.
We're trying to, that's a big number.
So I think an attainable number is, is probably closer to eight to nine hundred thousand dollars. In fees based on, you know, some of the projections for an excise tax and the projections for short term rental fees. I don't think you're going to make that gap up with impact fees or. Even if you went home rolling, got a lodging tax, the lodging tax could. And you have to be careful about lodging tax because lodging tax typically are reserved for tourism-based. Revenue, so marketing and things like that, so even your lodging tax may not apply here. But the lodging tax, to carry that on, could pay for the person that's doing all your marketing, so with the salary of Sarah, for example, could be. Could be paid for by lodging tax, bringing up that salary.
Okay, we're supposed to start our meeting in sixty seconds, just.
Basic building cost, eight hundred thousand would build seven. That's why I'm saying two million is. It may be a big stretch, but for the entire. The town grows out, it's.
Set a goal for the type of product that you want and how much of what before you can really determine what you need.
I mean, I, this is great, but I mean, I don't, we don't even know what a million dollars does for us, or, I mean, I think we need. More information before we start setting.
Can I, I'm just trying to get some general direction as far as different funding sources.
What, what do we get for a million dollars?
I mean, I showed you those, those different, different ways that we could use those funding dollars.
Right, but what, what actually does that get us though? I mean, that's what I would like to know.
It can get you land acquisition for affordable housing projects, so Andy, you had, you had a question about how we're going to afford the development of this. So the financial, once we deed over the land, we're going to work to find out every different incentive that we can. Whether it's tax abatement, whether it's subsidies for the planned investment fees, different tools like that. The developer is actually going to be able to take on the financial burden for the construction loans, the permanent loan that as well. So they'll be able to have, to handle, handle a load of financing for this. It just needs to pencil out at the bottom line. As far as, you know, their return on investment, which, I mean, just roughly speaking. For, for long-term, if they're managing long-term rentals, like apartments, they're typically looking for a five percent return on investment. If you're looking at for sale products, which we're looking at a composition with Victoria Village. For, you know, townhomes, some single family home cottages and apartments. The for sale townhomes and houses are typically a fifteen percent markup for the developer for those types of projects.
If I can, Mr. Mayor, I know we're, we're running short on time and a regular meeting starts and we've got an executive session right off the bat. Two questions, first question, by show of hands, who can make that March seventh meeting? That's a Monday, it's at five thirty, okay, so, so we can confirm that with, with the, with the working group. The second thing that I would, would want to ask is. Can we come back, let's say, the first, the second meeting in February, answer some of the questions that, that were asked here. Get a little bit more information because we did pick up some direction here and we could put together some better examples. We do have a housing need assessment study that was performed six years ago, which is old. But that could become the basis of determining some of those needs. So how many units we, we need and then we can maybe, Parnell, you've been very helpful about coming up with estimated costs and so forth, based on your experience with real, with real estate. We could probably put together some, some more realistic models. We won't have to reintroduce all of these funding streams, but we can show how these different funding streams could meet these certain models. And I think that would allow us to give more directions to the board. I like that idea.
And can we look at, you know, per person occupancy versus other?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll examine all of those.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah. Good work, thank you.
Thank you, good job, Michael. Yeah, let's take like a three minute break.
Well, yeah, we have a executive session off the back here.
Dude, I never know how long executives have.
I, I tried to keep it around fifteen minutes, but he's got a presentation.
Hey, I'd like to tell, to order the Town of Frasier's regular meeting on January nineteenth, twenty twenty. Seven oh nine, can I please have a roll call?
Katie Fisher.
Andy Miller.
Ryan Sirkmanek.
Arnold Quinn.
Katie Souls.
Eileen's muted. I did see her say Eileen Waldorf.
Eileen's attending virtually, so she's there and then Philip Vanderneill. Can I have an emotion? Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the January fifth? Minutes and resolution twenty twenty-two zero one zero six.
I saw move.
I'm skipping around here.
That's all right.
So I'll come back to approving the.
I'll second.
And for East Mountain filing. Eleven, I'm sorry.
Eileen moved.
Seconded, all in favor? Opposed? Great, and then can I, I skipped approval of the agenda, so can I have an approval, a motion to approve the agenda? So move.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Great, and then for everybody that's attending virtually. We are going directly into an executive session, so everybody that's online will be put into a waiting room. And once we're done with the executive session, then we'll let everybody back into the meeting. I'm not sure how long the executive session will last. I don't, stick around.
I moved to enter, into an executive session for a conference with the water attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS. Section twenty-four six four oh two four B regarding water rights litigation. Including. Water Attorney Kent Whitmer, Special Counsel Ben Miller and Lauren Riddle. Town Manager Ed Cannon, Town Clerk Anthony McBay, Assistant Town Manager Michael Brack, Adam Cronklin, Water and Waste Water Superintendent.
If I can make one correction to that, Kent Whitmer will not be in attendance at our water attorney's. If I can make one correction to that, Kent Whitmer will not be in attendance at our water attorney, is Chris Thorne.
I'd make that change.
Hey, is there?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? And Chris, if you could give the introduction, because it's attorney-client privilege, not since you're attorney, please.
Of course, Mayor. But before we get there, at least as far as I can tell, participating virtually, there, there are other folks still that I'm seeing on my screen here, and I don't know if they're in the waiting room.
We, we, yeah, hey, Chris, we will put them into the waiting room after you, after you let everybody know that, that's attorney-client privilege.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mayor.
And then we let it, we let them back in after we close the executive session.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Sorry for that confusion. Yes, the executive session will include discussions that constitute privileged attorney-client communications throughout the discussion. And on that basis, there'd be, it'd be inappropriate to have an electronic or other record kept of the discussion, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, pardon me, could you also admit Mark Maxwell is part of our attorney team? And then, could you amend the motion to allow him to enter into the executive session?
I'll make that motion. I'll make that amendment to the motion.
Thank you.
Can we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed?
Great. I'm not sure that Catherine was included. You said Catherine.
She's not included.
Sorry, Catherine.
Yeah. Look, make sure the front door is locked, too.
It is.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, we are live. Okay, welcome back, everybody. We are now at discussion of possible action, and the first item is the EQR study results, and where's Joe? One second. Hey, Joe, you're up.
We have the EQR study and some, our engineers are going to present it. Main reason we did the study is one of the districts reached 80% capacity, which is Grand County number one. So in accordance with our agreement, we have to do a EQR study to see if the tap count is right. And completed the study, and these guys will give you the
perfect.
Just a.
Thanks, Joe.
Can y'all hear, hear me okay?
We can, done. Thanks.
So mine's Ben Miller, I'm project manager for Tetra Tech. Our office is located in Denver. So as Joe said, this, this study was prompted by Grand County number one reaching 80% of their EQR allocation. And with me, so with me today, I've got Mark Maxwell, who's a senior project manager, engineer for Tetra Tech, and Lauren Riedel, who did, who will present the, the majority of the, of the study for you tonight. So stop us anytime you have questions. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to you, Lauren.
Thanks, Ben. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I'll go ahead and pull up the presentation. Please, I need to share my screen. Let's see. I thought I had it down earlier. Let's see, share screen at the bottom, okay. We typically use Microsoft Teams, so Zoom is a little bit new for us. Okay. Alrighty. Minimize that.
Lauren?
Yep. Okay. Um. So as Joe and Ben already said, the CQR study was done to reevaluate the EQRs and the flows and loads associated with those EQRs for the Upper Fraser Valley Wastewater Treatment Plant. And Ben and Mark, feel free to jump in at any time. Everyone else, if you have questions, please feel free to ask them during the presentation, so we don't lose anyone. Our EQR study presentation will closely follow the report outline that we prepared, starting with background, a district overview, and EQRs, both the capacity and the total number of sold EQRs to date. Then we'll jump into data analysis. We looked at water usage, wastewater flows and loads, precipitation for their area, and as it relates to inflow and infiltration. And we'll end the presentation with conclusions and recommendations, and take additional questions at that time. Starting with the background of the study. As everyone knows, the three districts that are serviced by the wastewater treatment plant are the Town of Fraser, Grand County Water and Sanitation District number one, and Winter Park Ranch Water and Sanitation District. If we take a look at the sold EQRs to date, and the, sort them by type, there are 87% residential taps or EQRs. 10% of them are commercial and 3% are transient residential, which basically means hotels or overnight rentals of that sort. Key characteristics that affect wastewater treatment plant operation for this community include seasonal tourism. A lot of these residential taps that you see EQRs are, are secondary homes and rental properties. So for a large portion of the year, when it's not ski season or another tourist on season, these taps and EQRs are underutilized and underused. Also during the winter ski tourism season, we'll see higher BOD loads. Another key characteristic, like a lot of Colorado, are the presence of microbreweries and distilleries. And many of these breweries and distilleries do not pre-treat their waste before sending it to the wastewater treatment plant. So we may observe spikes in BOD load to the plant, which affects operation of the plant. Looking at EQRs, currently, the JFOC agreement assigns each equivalent residential unit a flow value of 270 gallons per, per day, and a BOD load value of 0.6 pounds per day. The JFOC agreement also describes an EQR as a single-family home with three bedrooms, so we can equate that to three people per EQR, which would redistribute flows 90 gallons per capita day and loads to 0.2 pounds per capita day. These are pretty typical flow and loads per person. So we feel comfortable recommending that that the Upper Waste, the Upper Fraser Valley Wastewater Treatment Plant continue to use these values into the future. They're, they are typical of national averages. In the JFOC agreement, the initial reserve capacity for the approximately 2.5 million gallon per day plant is 8,518 EQRs distributed between the three entities. This equates to 2.4 MGD of flow. If we include infiltration and inflow allowance, that brings us up to 2.7 MGD. And the load allowance is approximately 5,111 pounds per day. The ultimate reserve capacity reflects the number of EQRs that we could have if the plant were upgraded in capacity from 2.5 MGD to five or six MGD. So that number would increase overall 18,400 EQRs. The number of EQR sold per year has been increasing by roughly 2.1%. If we take out and ignore year 2020, which was a slow growth year, that number could be a bit higher as well. Currently, there, as of second quarter 2021, there were, wrote it down here, 5,827 EQR sold. So this graph on the next page shows you the sold EQRs in the black and blue stripes. The solid blue is the additional remaining from the initial reserve capacity. And then if the plant were to expand into the future, the white on top of that would be the additional EQRs in addition. The percentages you see in this chart are related to the percentage of the initial reserve capacity. So the sold EQRs for Grand County Water and Sanitation District number one, for example, are, we've sold 81% out of the available reserve EQRs at the moment. So this is just to get an idea of the capacity available. I'm jumping into data analysis. We first looked at water usage and wastewater flows by entity. As you can see, the wastewater flows are generally higher, and that reflects INI contribution to the wastewater flows. We will not be examining EQRs and the distribution between the three districts, so this is more for your informational purposes in making a future decision. But we won't really look at water and wastewater by entity. We'll be examining EQRs more on the basis of whether the flow and load makes sense per person.
Lauren, if I could, just for just a quick second, this is Ed Cannon. A lot of us here on staff level understand a lot of these acronyms you're using. So if, if you don't mind, maybe the first time you, you talk about like MGD and so forth, you talk about millions of gallons per day, or give some context to that. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, sure, no problem. Are there any areas that are fuzzy so far that I can clarify?
MGD is my, my one.
Million gallons per day, okay. We'll go through gallons per day, GPD, gallons per capita day, and pounds per day. Those are some that I've been using so far.
Lauren, do we have any historical data on this? This, this particular graph's pretty interesting. I know it's outside the study, but infiltration's been a big problem. Do we, do we have any data that shows our infiltration's gone down, or?
Um.
Did this at all, or?
Uh, we will talk a little bit about influ and infiltration later in the study. We, we don't, again, we don't talk about it by entity. But we are just merely observing whether it's excessive or non-excessive as a whole for the wastewater treatment plant collection system.
So if you, if you don't mind, I'll add something here. So what we're, our ultimate goal here is to look at what can the wastewater plant handle? So, you know, if, if you say oversell the EQRs, can the wastewater plant handle it, that type of thing? Is, is the INI going to push you past the flow requirements or the flow limitations on your EQRs right now? So, you know, we looked at it as maybe, you know, a 2,000-foot view of it, instead of the individual, looking at the individual contributors to, to the, to the wastewater plant.
Let me add one more thing. Plants have hydraulic and organic load capacity. Fortunately for you, the peak hydraulic flows and peak organic loads, biochemical oxygen demand, BOD, do not happen concurrently. Your peak loads occur in the winter when your flows are actually less than they are in the spring and early summer when you have high INI. So fortunately, the high flows and the high BOD strength are not coincidental. If they were coincidental, you'd be in a more serious situation.
Right. Okay, I'll move on to the next slide. So next, we looked at wastewater data and both load and flow. This particular slide concerns load, which is biochemical oxygen demand, BOD. So in the table at the top, we're just calculating the average annual load by year. And at the end, on the right side, we've averaged that average annual load for all 10 years, and get a load of 948 pounds per day. The peaking factor for that is 2.64. That means on a max day, peaking factor, that's the maximum we would expect in general. Here in this graph, we're showing BOD data. Um, here in this graph, we're showing BOD data from the wastewater treatment plant. Um, thirty-day average BODs as well as max day BOD readings, um, which are in dark navy and light blue respectively. Um, what we gather from this graph mainly is that we are well below the wastewater treatment plant permit limit. Um, so there are no um concerns regarding overloading the plant at this moment. We're also below the initial reserve capacity, um, what was set aside for the plant. And we're below the even the connected EQR capacity. So based on the number of EQR sold, we are still coming in under that predicted load. Uh, a few things to note also here, some of the high outliers, um, the higher BOD loads are most likely caused by microbrewery and distillery uh high-strength waste releases into the wastewater collection system. Um, so this is a waste product um through the distillery and microbrewery process that contributes to spikes in BOD. Do you have anything to add, Mark or Ben?
Uh, no, not not really. Um, the EQR uh allocations based on max day BOD readings, that's the lighter blue. The state of Colorado rates plants on their thirty-day average BOD load. So, um, we looked at at the Joe's request, uh, both the with the what is associated with the EQR schedule, max day BOD, and then how the play state might be evaluating with respect to utilization of capacity. And you're in good shape with respect to the EQR evaluation and the way the state would look at the plant as you're still underloaded.
Right. Um, one other thing to mention is that uh two BOD readings were taken per month. Um, and later on, we may recommend increasing that sampling number. Um, our next slide is a very similar slide, but this time for flow data instead of organic loading data. Um, the table at the top calculates the annual average flow of zero point six nine million gallons per day, uh, which we also uh calculated a maximum day flow peaking factor of three point seven four, which shows you that flows are highly variable and do peak. Um, there's a little bit of a sinusoidal pattern to the flow, which indicates um seasons of higher flows. And we'll take a look at that as well. Um, in general, uh, if we were to control these higher flows, um, the the hydraulic capacity of the plant is still sufficient. Um, the wastewater treatment plant permit limit is up here in gray. So we still have, um, we're still able to handle the flows coming in other than these high INI-related flows. Um, so when we are thinking about how the EQRs are utilized currently, it's better to look at load load rather than flow, um, because flow varies so much with INI, which is not related to tap utilization. Um, so we went through some calculations, looking at load. Your highest loading season would be the winter, um, when ski tourism is high. And we selected a worst-case BOD concentration based on the BOD data that we received of three hundred milligrams per liter. And we multiplied that by um actual maximum day winter flows for those years um to calculate a maximum day winter BOD load. And we compared that to the load if there were full utilization of the sold taps. And we therefore calculated these utilization rates. Um, so those uh, the two thousand over the three thousand numbers gave us our utilization rate. The average over these past five years is sixty-eight percent utilization. Um, moving on, we'll tie this all together at the end. Um, we looked at precipitation and how it relates to inflow and infiltration. Um, so for precipitation, these are averages over ten years of data. And we can see that the high precipitation season is the spring, which is very typical in Colorado. So using that information, uh, we did a desktop assessment of whether the inflow and infiltration could be considered excessive. So here we're using a GPA guidance. Um, it reads domestic wastewater plus non-excessive infiltration should not exceed one hundred and twenty gallons per capita day during periods of high groundwater. So infiltration is the seepage of water, um, usually groundwater into cracks in pipes like sewer lines. Um, so during periods of high groundwater, like the later seasons of spring, April and May, um, we'd expect more infiltration during that time. So therefore, um, we calculated utilization during that time um and use the average influent flow uh to calculate this last column. And um I'm not gonna dive exactly into the calculation. Um, please stop me if you would like to know. In essence, we calculated a range of a hundred and fifty gallons per capita day to a hundred and seventy gallons per capita day, which um which signals that infiltration is potentially excessive within the service area of the wastewater treatment plant. We looked at inflow separately. Inflow occurs um more during during storm events when when water from the storm um enters foundations and is pumped out by sump pumps, um, which can in turn be connected to the sewer collection system or from uh rain gutters and storm drains that are connected to the sewer system. So here we're looking at maximum day influent flow. Um, the total twenty-four hour daily flow during a storm does not exceed two hundred and seventy-five gallons per capita day. So if it does not exceed, then we would consider it non-excessive. And again, we we did a similar similar calculation uh to infiltration. And then the last column, we calculated maximum day flows during storm events ranging from around two hundred and forty to two hundred and sixty gallons per capita day. This puts us under that two hundred and seventy-five limit. So we conclude inflow, although significant, may not be excessive per the EPA's definition. So our conclusions and recommendations from all of this data crunching are as follows. Um, first off, the current EQR flow and BOD load allocations of two hundred and seventy gallons per day and zero point six pounds per day of BOD are realistic and consistent with national averages. Um, Tetra Tech does not recommend revising um EQR flows and loads. All three entities should pursue strategies or solutions um to the batch discharge of high-strength waste from breweries and distilleries, one of which could be requiring pre-treatment before the breweries and distilleries release the waste. And this will help the wastewater treatment plant oper- operate more normally um and predictably without sudden spikes in BOD load.
Lauren, if I could just energetically briefly, uh, gallon for gallon, uh brewery waste, distillery waste are fifty to a hundred times more concentrated than domestic wastewater. So a little bit of brewery waste, a little bit of distillery waste goes a long way to consuming the organic load capacity at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, I just wanted to say it's not like brewery wastes are equivalent to normal domestic wastewater. They're much, much more concentrated and put a strong impact on the treatment plant.
Right. Thanks, Mark. Additionally, to con- to control flow spikes, um, the three entities should make inflow and infiltration identification and control an ongoing component of the collection system maintenance programs. Uh, we also, we recommend that the three entities take a deeper look at the sources of INI in their collection systems and continue to maintain those. Uh, we also recommend increasing BOD testing from two times per month to at least weekly such that we can better pair BOD data with flow data and have a more accurate sense of EQR utilization. This will help in doing future EQR reevaluations. Um, as stated previously, the average peak season EQR utilization rate over the past five years is sixty-eight percent. Um, it is therefore possible for the JFOC to sell additional EQRs than what they have um what they have on reserve while still staying within the initial reserve capacity, allowable load of five thousand one hundred and eleven pounds per day. Um, because the taps are underutilized at the moment, there um is not a great danger of um surpassing the load capacity of the plant. So finally, um, following up on that point, we are suggesting an increasing from sixty-eight percent utilization of taps to eighty-five percent utilization. Um, and we believe this is a reasonable planning target. Um, still maintaining a buffer that um will protect the plant from spikes and loads as well and as well as flow spikes. Um, so increasing from sixty-eight to eighty-five percent utilization would mean selling ten thousand taps instead of eight thousand or EQRs instead of eight thousand five hundred and eighteen. We also recommend that this planning target be revisited every five years or more often uh to prevent overloading of the plant.
Now, is that are those taps in addition to what we already have?
Um, this would be initial reserve capacity. So this would be including the ones you already have sold. Um, I believe right now the number sold is around fifty-eight hundred EQRs. Um, with your maximum cap being eight thousand five hundred and eighteen until the plant is expanded, uh, we would suggest increasing that maximum to ten thousand instead of eight thousand five hundred and eighteen.
So it's a it's a bump of about fifteen hundred EQRs.
Yeah.
In terms of what we believe you can sell and still not oversell, uh overload the plant with respect to um load, organic load. And flow, although flow is really dependent upon INI control, so it's kind of a separate thing. It's not so much affected by how many EQRs are connected. It's about how much infiltration and inflow you have. So you can separately work on bringing your your flows down through INI control.
And Lauren mentioned um INI sources as um storm drains and and gutters. But really, a lot of it here, I think, is old sewer sewer pipe, from my understanding, right, is clay pipe.
Typical, something that's pretty typical for mountain towns like this is you'll have cracked manholes. Uh, you know, sewer pipe with with cracks in it or uh corrosion-related if it if it happens to be metal pipe. And when you have the spring spring runoff, water table comes up and it it starts to inundate those air, those damaged areas. So it's a, it's a pretty common problem uh throughout the throughout the mountains.
Right. I I and I control is a forever thing. Uh, as as Joe fixes one leak, another one that might be starting to leak in an area he doesn't know where it is yet. And so, um, nobody ever has a completely tight collection system, but they get it pretty tight and they have to keep working diligently just to keep leakage down to a small roar rather than a big big roar. We're looking at a project in northern Colorado, a selenium study. And most of the selenium is entering the wastewater treatment plant via groundwater infiltration. And the subdivision that's uh seems to be the guilty party is only five years old. And uh the INI is coming in from manholes and service connections primarily. But some pump, foundation drain, some pumps can also be in there. So it's, there are lots of potential sources to try to identify and get a handle on.
No, we've been working pretty hard on it, but the one table you showed, it kind of showed the amount of INI over the gallons used. Um, Winter Park Ranch um had the best, the best rate, and they've got the newest system. So there is some some argument, these older systems, of course, are are more of a challenge, so.
I I I agree, the older systems are more of a challenge, but uh sometimes new sewer construction doesn't uh always live up to its billing depending upon the quality of the install.
Okay, great. Any more questions? Then what what are you looking for from us? Just your, this is information.
This is just information sharing about the results of these. Now, as far as the conclusions and recommendations, um, we're already addressing some of these. We have engaged Geosintec to do a uh pre-treatment program uh study.
For the distilleries?
Well, we're, it's, it was kicked off because of the uh the extra BODs for breweries and distilleries. So we need to address that, and that would reduce that 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 BOD level and loading at the plant, which again preserves our 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 capacity. Uh, another thing we're doing, uh, been talking with Adam about putting our 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 capital improvement plan together and addressing the old infrastructure, especially Old Town. The clay pipes, the clay pipes have been lined. Uh, the town kind of kicked off that effort, you know, before the other two districts. However, it's not as effective as as new plastic pipes could be. So we're gonna try to put together a a progressive plan to replace and update all those, all that old infrastructure, and then we'll have to look at manholes, lining the manholes so that we eliminate the inflow that can come through or the infiltration from that, those high-water events. There's a lot of things we can do, but Mark is exactly right. It's it is an ongoing, constant uh battle. You have to stay on top of that. But we have a lot of old pipes that needs, that quite frankly, just needs to be replaced.
All right, thanks. Thank you very much.
Great. Yep.
Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you all. Appreciate you letting us give it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
We are now at resolution twenty twenty-two zero one zero seven, water ten-year capital.
Okay, uh, so I'm here tonight to ask for funding so that we can proceed on a ten-year capital improvement plan for the water system. Um, basically, this is a guiding document that uh will help us make decisions uh as we as we grow and need additional infrastructure. If you recall, a couple of months ago, or maybe it was a few, I I was up here talking about our water supply. And in that presentation, we uh I let you know that we will need additional wells at some time. As we go up the side of the mountain, we'll need additional storage tanks, we'll need additional pump stations. We have two different systems, um, and each one has different needs. We're gonna need on the north system, we're gonna need additional water rights and development. And right now, our treatment plant is our limiting factor. Um, as far as the the gallons we can pump, our wells produce more. These are all reasons why we need to have a capital improvement plan. We also have developers that are are trying to go up the mountain. And if we do not have a plan in place, we're not ready to answer those questions for the developers. To me, it's a pretty uh, simple topic where, yeah, this is, it's to provide an outlook for us so that we can be successful. With that, we have a proposal in front of you. It's fifty thousand dollars. And Merrick is our, our contract engineers for the town. Um, they would be performing it. And uh, it, with the water supply plan in place and adopted, th- this is the right time to move forward with uh, what are the capital improvements we need to keep up with development?
And that fifty thousands in the budget?
We have, uh, that's under line item fifty dash forty dash three thirty for engineering fees. We have a hundred thousand dollars in the budget. Uh, that includes a SCADA master plan. Tablets for operators and development of the capital improvement plan.
And Adam, if um, the, the planning doesn't talk about surface water at all, or about our St. Louis rights and that?
Well, you, this would be a capital plan. It, it does integrate into water rates a little bit because your water rights and uh, your consumption or your use determines how many wells and stuff you need. But uh, it's kind of, th- this is more towards the pipes in the ground and the hardware, uh, rather than the water rights. It, it does integrate and, and you'll see on my next ask, uh, it's really two parts. The, the hydrological studies are, are the second part of this, or an additional, a complimentary part that, that we need to have in place as well.
That's all wells too though. So I just, there, I'm sure there's some, there's some thinking about the down the line and, and.
Absolutely. And, and that's kind of why uh, this ask and the next ask are in concert so that we can look at these things together. Cause how do you do a capital improvement plan if you don't know how and where you're going to put wells? Or, or the number of wells and what they'll produce and those kinds of things. So.
Have possibly have part of our supply as a service. So.
Yeah.
Right.
So this is, these are predictive studies basically, and, and they'll be more defined in the near term than they will be in the long term. We do call it a ten-year CIP. Um, I anticipate it, it's not going to go by year to year. As you all know, our, our construction fluctuates from year to year. And so we'll probably, a ten-year CIP is just a common name that everybody understands. Will probably followed by EQRs, just similar to our, our water supply study. So at, you know, at five hundred EQRs or do we need an additional well at a thousand EQRs? Do we need additional well? Do we need more uh, fire storage for uh, fire protection, those kinds of things? Which is additional tanks and, and additional infrastructure.
And as far as treatment goes, groundwater under the influence, the part where we have to go with expensive treatment, that, that, that sits outside of this also.
You know, we did the Gooty testing, groundwater under, and, and we passed. So um, tho- those are some of the challenges that will be flushed out, I, I think in, in the study is, you know, we do have surface rights. Right now, on the north system, our treatment plant is our limiting factor. So do we add additional treatment? Do we just go to another uh, pump so we can do more volume? There, there's a lot of choices here, but these are the kinds of things that will be flushed out in it. And uh, Chris Thorne will be consulted, HRS will be consulted because there are legal aspects and hydrological aspects to it.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two oh one oh seven, the water ten-year capital improvement plan.
A second.
So this is really a compliment to the uh, capital improvement plan. As we grow, we will exhaust our water rights on, on the north system. And because of that, we have to, we, we need to do some well field studies. Basically, the first phase is looking at our current well field and our current water right. And we, have we exhausted it? What are our options to continue using it? Currently, our decree allows us to have nine wells in this well field. And it also allows us to produce up to sixteen hundred gallons a minute. I don't believe even the quantities that our wells produce will, will never achieve that sixteen hundred gallons a minute, even with nine wells. Our, our wells produce between seventy and two hundred gallons a minute currently. And, and thus, we need to look at, and we currently only have seven wells drilled in the northern well field. So we have two more wells to use. The real questions are, where do they go? Will they affect the current production of the current wells? Yeah, is there basically the drawdown? Is it a negative impact on the, our existing wells? So the first phase is how to optimize our current well field and our current water right. How do we get the most out of that? The second phase of this study would be looking at additional well fields and additional water rights. And, and the second phase is really important because we have lands to the north and northwest of us that have approached the town about annexations. They may not come back next year or the next year. But again, we need to have these answers in place. When they come to us for annexation, we need to be able to say, hey, a thousand units, we're going to need to produce this many gallons of water per minute. We're going to have to have hydrological studies done on those properties so that we can say, we need three wells on that property. We need easements for the transmission lines to get it to our treatment plant. We need to have those answers in place before these people come to us. When they come to us and we say, we need two years to study it, we're losing. And, and so really, phase one is to optimize what we have today in place. Phase two is to look at our growth and, and where uh, we can get future water supplies and additional well fields. And you know, intuitively, it would be along the St. Louis Creek and along the Fraser River on these annexation properties. And those would be conditions of annexations. So uh, it's really setting the stage for future success.
Adam, if I can just ask a quick question. We have water rights on St. Louis Creek that we haven't even explored yet. And I know that, that some of those rights have been uh, they're not in jeopardy, but, but there's other water cases that want to take water out of. So with this hydrological study, evaluate maybe possible uses for perfecting that right? Because they are fairly senior rights and I'd hate for us to possibly not utilize those and, and see diversions.
You know, I, I, I think that lies between the two studies, to be honest. The hydrological as well as the capital improvement plan. Because if we were to go to start treating surface water, we would have to upgrade our treatment plant. We, we use the ground to filter things right now. And, and we have a pretty simple uh, process. To treat surface water, it gets much more complicated. And uh, and, and so I, I, I think that kind of discussion really falls between these two. You, you know, and it may end up, we, our current well fields are actually alternate points of diversion for uh, a portion of those water rights. And they were originally surface rights. So there, there's a lot of ways to skin that cat. And I think uh, those discussions will happen through these processes.
And to uh, answer the question, I know you're going to ask Katie. That's line item fifty dash forty dash three seventy, other professional services. We have a hundred and five thousand dollars budgeted for that, for the hydrological study, well field study, and uh, even a water rate study.
Any other questions or motions?
Katie, make a motion. Last time. Okay, I'm going to keep this rolling.
Alright. Okay, resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero one dash zero eight, hydrological wa- well field studies. I move to approve that motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
It's a resolution.
The resolution.
Hi.
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 Put you on the spot.
Okay, thanks, Adam.
Thank you.
The first amendment to the MOU for Fraser.
So when we had the joint meeting, my, our, our reservation here was that, because we're talking also Granby too, right? Or is this?
Yeah, this adds grand, you know.
So our, right?
So this is adding them to the working group, um, which based on just a lot of weasters we've been having. I mean, housing in the Granby benefits the Fraser Valley, just like.
Oh, no, I know it does. But, but here's my, here's my fear. And what we brought up at that joint meeting was, we tried to pass an issue. Will it pass in Granby also? You know, where we try to pass a mill levy, that, that we're going to depend on the voters of Granby to, to make this, make this work. And I wonder if there's any way to structure this, you know, and I'm thinking, you know, it's my way of thinking, the impact fees can be the easiest one to set. Not the, not the um, excise tax, I'm sorry. The excise tax is going to be the easiest one to sell. That's, that addresses the problem directly. And it comes from the industry that's, that's part of, a big part of the problem. And is, I don't know if there's any way to, to make that vote so that if Granby doesn't vote for it and we do vote for it, then we change the district. That, that sounds like a stretch, but we may need to stretch that way. I mean, the reason we started a transportation district here what, and didn't include Granby in the beginning. And we do serve them now, but they're still not part of the transportation district. Was we feared that we wouldn't be able to get the funding and the taxing we needed with Granby included. I, Granby's a great neighbor. They're, they're wonderful people, but, but that was our reservation at that meeting was we were afraid if we brought Granby on board, we wouldn't be able to pass these, these difficult valid questions.
Right. Do you, do you think Granby's not having a housing issue?
And I know they're having a housing issue, but we, but the majority of their voters have to agree with that, Parnell.
Most of them do.
Well, maybe, I don't know.
And, and we've done a lot of um, discussions with, with, with Ted Sherry as town manager of Granby. He's had a lot of discussions with his board. He's a lot, had a lot of discussions with the local populace, uh, business owners.
Yeah.
There's a, a large rally of support that, that has been stirring for this initiative within Granby. And uh, and I can actually work with Ted to get, to get you some, some better data on that. But since that meeting that we had where this was kind of an initial discussion coming up, uh, you know, that, not understanding if, you know, what, what was the easiest way to get something across the finish line? We've, we've learned a lot from Granby since then, and they've done a, an informational campaign on this. As we will do a much larger PR campaign with this. And all the preliminary surveys and information and discussions show that Granby, as in the, the, the voters of the town of Grand, they are very much in favor of this type of initiative.
Has a polling, has polling been done, done with the voters or?
Oh, I can get you specific information on how Ted's kind of gathered this information. And we do, we will do that.
I just want success. I mean.
No, we do too. Yeah, we, we do too.
And that's why we focused in down here to begin with, you know, and, and I mean, all this has come along through the press. We haven't had this discussion. I think it's a discussion worth having. So, because I, I just want all of us to be successful. And the transportation shows that we, we now send buses that direction. We're building up that support. So we've been sure, we tried to sell the transportation district to the whole county at one time. And we just knew it wouldn't fly.
Right.
So we focused in on where the, where the part of the problem was. And you're right, Parnell, there's a real problem in Granby too. But the heart of the problem is here, the heart of the support is here. And I hope it's in Granby too. But I, I just, you know, I want, I want this to work.
I could also add that uh, the Granby Town Board also unanimously signed this MOU to be part of this. And well, they, they, they voted for it.
Yeah.
The Board of County Commissioners also have approved this and they have signed off on that as well. And they have even pledged financial support. So is the town of Granby. Uh, the support, Granby has been part of our, our, our working group probably since mid-September. And we've had county representation as well. We've had, we've gone through a learning process at the county. You know, that first initial meeting, there was, there seemed to be some reservations. But quite frankly, it seems like the entire county is, Board of County Commissioners are one hundred percent behind us in support of, of our efforts to do this. And for not all indication shows that Granby is as well. I understand and appreciate your concerns about that. But we've asked that question probably for, you know, three, four, five months now about what is the percentage of, of, are the, what is our likelihood to get this measure passed in a, in a ballot initiative? And that's why when we showed you the map during the work session, uh, we showed that the rec district already cut into a, a, about a third of Granby's town limits. And uh, so we already knew that we had some element of support for this, for the, uh, for the rec district. There was two other maps proposed. One of them was the one that you saw tonight, which included extended out to the town limits of Granby. The third map actually extended, included the east protection, fire protection district boundaries, which we almost went all the way up to Grand Lake and out toward Hot Sulphur Springs. And everybody, the county, the, you know, Winter Park, Fraser, you know, all the leadership in these working groups said that would just won't fly because, because of the reach. I'm not worried too much about Granby. I'm more worried about the unincorporated parts of Grand County that, that would be voting for that. For that possible mill levy.
And, and which is, that echoes Andy's concern.
Yeah.
Right. You, you start adding more to the pot, I mean, there's, you're going to have more concern. There's definitely more concern. And we know that, we know a hundred percent that it would pass. And so, and that's the issue.
And for the town of Granby, you know, their, their trustees will need to basically sign off for this special district to include the town limits of Granby. Once that special district is formed and this goes towards the ballot initiative, the voter base that approves this initiative will be that district. So if the, even if, if, you know, kind of like what you're saying, if there's, if fifty percent of Granby votes and votes against this type of initiative, but we still have seventy percent support in Fraser, whatever, which we anticipate much higher than that, it would still pass. Uh, of course, we want to be, be in league with what the community needs and what the desires are, of course. But we, based on.
My, Michael, what's the population of Granby? It's large. It is. Yeah, this is. Look at that. I mean, it is, there's a lot of voters there. So.
Yeah. No, I, I really appreciate your concerns, Andy. And actually, I, I will, I'll follow up with Ted Sherry, the manager there and ask him what he's been done, been doing for kind of.
Run some scenarios, see what kind of percentage we need to get of supportive voters in Granby to make this, this fly. Cause we, that's, that's a, that's a pretty big pie there. And, and the pie knows it's in trouble. But, but that's, that's a large population base.
And this is, for the purposes of MOU, this is for the working group. Um, and this is also to help identify the housing needs. Assessive study, we will include the town limits of Granby. Um, but this does not guarantee the town of Granby to actually be a part of that special district. This is an MOU for adding them to this working group.
And start to.
To work, to work towards this initiative to see what makes the most sense. So it's really just kind of formally adopting them as members of this working group to figure out what is the best way for, you know, what is the most likely path to success for voter approval for, whether it's a mill levy and excise tax. So just so you know, this is not solidifying that being a part of this.
Maybe somebody's got on polling would be a good idea. So.
Yeah.
So this M- MOU also by in, inviting the town of Granby to be part of the working group commits Granby to put up up to fifty thousand dollars toward, you know, the, the cost, the feasibility study, you know, we've got to get through this first section. We've already been discussing about PR and how to sell this ballot initiative and what kind of messaging that needs to be as well. But we haven't really got to that point yet. We're still doing the feasibility study here.
And uh, and just so you know, too, this, this MOU does incorporate the uh, dedicated ten thousand dollars from Grand County for legal costs.
I say we move forward with them now and things start to go south and we, yeah, boot them.
Yeah. And Andy, that's a really good concern that we'll, we'll make sure that is addressed at the combined meeting.
Yeah.
And definitely before that as well.
So I'd, I'd like to move that we approve. So I'd like to move that we approve, um, resolution 2022 oh one oh nine, first amendment to the MOU for housing collaboration between the towns of Winter Park and Frazier. And I would assume that motion would include in Granby. Corrector.
We're we're making an amendment to an existing MOU, so we have to link the existing.
Towns of Winter Park and Frazier.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. Are now at resolution 20. Twenty twenty two zero one, ten, ratification of contract offer for Victoria Village.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll handle this one here. As you recall, the last meeting, two weeks ago, we had an executive session. Following that executive session, the the Board of Trustees approved an offer for the Victoria Village subdivision. We were not allowed to talk about the the cost of that offer or the actual location of the parcel. Because until we have we're under contract, it's still a matter of negotiation. Following that meeting, we made that offer. And they they, of course, they received the offer and through some follow up conversations, another offer was also made. For roughly $100,000 above our offer. So time was running out on number one, the grant application, which at the time we still believe was Saturday of this past weekend. The time was also running out on our time limit for getting under contract. So I did a poll of our trustees and and made a decision to increase that offer to $3.8 million from the original offer, 3.65 million dollars. That offer was accepted, it was signed at that point, and we were officially under contract. However, because of the motion that was made two weeks ago, I needed to come back and re ratify that that offer at the new price. And I will also expand on this a little bit more because we could not share a lot of information. You know, two weeks ago, but I am very proud of the fact that that we are under contract for 3.8 million for Victoria Village, which is an 11.3 acre parcel. It's in the town limits of of Frazier. It's located in the southeast corner of of US 40 and County Road Eight. It's just north of our post office. This land has been for sale for some time. There's been numerous offers on there, but they have fallen through for a variety of reasons. One of those reasons could be the the fact that there is a there is a wetland easement over this parcel, and it is part of a flood plain as well. However, what made the the parcel attractive to me and also to the Board of Trustees was. Number one, there was a grant that was offered in that came available in October of 2021. It's called the Operation Turnkey Grant. And that Operation Turnkey Grant will pay up to 80% of the purchase price of land for acquisition for affordable housing. That 80% put the our out of pocket price somewhere close to $770,000. Which makes this an extremely affordable purchase for the town in combination with the grant. Our contract offer still has a condition on there that we that we cannot close unless we have notice of award of that grant. So if we're denied the grant, the contract essentially goes away. And then it goes back on the market. So we have spent, or I should say, Michael has spent a tremendous amount of time putting together that grant paperwork. It was a very complex grant. We submitted that grant yesterday, they had extended the timeline because of the holiday. That grant is now in possession of the state. We received confirmation that they've received that. I think it's a well written grant, I think Michael did an excellent job on that, so and he deserved a lot of credit for this this whole initiative. But we're excited because now owning this land, if, you know, once we get this grant awarded, we can actually take possession of the land. Gives us a tremendous advantage to work and partner with a developer to create affordable housing in 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 the town of Frazier. I think our grant application looked at 130 units. Is that is that the right number you?
Hundred five at a minimum.
Hundred and five at a minimum. Okay, so we have tremendous opportunity to address a tremendous amount of need. Housing needs assessment that was from 2016 identified so many housing units. This will pay make a pretty good dent in that in that pile. Owning the land allows us to partner, we can dedicate the land to the developer, that tremendously reduces their cost as well. And we can work with other programs, other grant opportunities to further create affordable housing in in this area. So this resolution is to ratify the $3.8 million contract. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
I move to accept resolution 2022 oh one ten, ratification of contract offer for Victoria Village.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
But oh, yeah.
Okay, open forum, we're now at open forum, which is business not on the agenda. And everybody, this is where the public can speak and address to the board, the board. Most likely will not respond. You have three minutes to address the board and. There's nobody here in the town hall, so if anybody from the public online would like to address the board, you can digitally raise your hand now. Okay, I don't see any hands being raised, so we are now at updates. And the first update is.
Can I bring up something now? Can I bring up something?
You're you're the board, so you're not public, you're not the open forum, unless you want to be, are you?
Well, no, I'm just wondering when I'll have a chance, so I wanted to bring up the meeting I attended.
That's an update, update.
Okay.
So you're.
Perfect.
Yeah. So updates first is Fire and Ice Festival from Sarah.
Hi, everybody, how are you?
Good, yeah.
Good, just wanted to give you a quick update on the event that's coming up. So the Public Arts Committee has been wanting to do a second event specifically in the winter. The past couple of years, they just haven't had an opportunity to get get it organized. So this year, we decided to do this really simple event. It's named Fire and Ice. The poster, which was in the packet, kind of gives you a timeline on on what takes place. It'll start with a lighted walk from the mural park to the lion's ponds. At the lion's ponds, we have hired a ice sculptor and he'll be building basically like a 15 foot tall. I like to call it like a chimney because it's hollow on the inside, and we'll be placing burnable materials in there. And then you light it up and the flames kind of shoot out the top and it melts to the ground. There's also going to be a bonfire with all the Christmas trees that we've been collecting. There's going to be a like a 15 minute firework show, and then there will be music provided by a DJ and probably hot chocolate and coffee and some kind of warm beverages that evening. So really simple to pull off, but it'll probably be a ton of fun, so everybody should should stop down. And if you have any questions, just let me know.
Hey, Sarah, can we get it on our website? Or at least, or if it's there, I just can't pull it up, I've been looking on what's happening and haven't pulled anything up on it.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay.
So it's. Learn about it, yeah, it's gonna be, it'll be really fun event, I'm gonna be out of town, I'm sad.
What's the date?
February 5th. And it starts at 5:30 PM.
Thanks, any other questions for Sarah? Okay, any other updates, Katie? You want to give us an update?
Yeah, I do want to give you an update. So I attended the strategic planning collaborative session at the Winter Park Town Hall. And it was time very well spent, there was. Roger Helen, Mira and Myra were there, Keith, the manager for Winter Park, Paula, Grand County Tourism, Nick, the mayor. And Sky and Liz from Winter Park Resort and Rich Chuminow. And what they're looking at is putting together, and they've got the chambers putting the initial $50,000 towards this. But it's a sustainable community plan that will encompass the whole Frazier Valley. And it's a big picture, the initial one is big picture, but I'm really excited about it. And one of the things I think, well, it'll be good for the town of Frazier as well as the Winter Park and all. But we have our own plan, comprehensive plan is. Up for upgrading. This will also involve a number of public meetings to get feedback from the community. And I think that we would be able to tie them in together, so I think the timing's awesome. Um, they will be looking for support and. A representative, well, the game plan was there would be a. Working group with like six people in a working group, someone representing Frazier. And my thought, I know she's still out there, is Catherine Trotter could be the ideal person to have a part of this. Because she has her finger on the pulse of our planning and growth initiatives and trails and. All that good stuff, so I think that she would be a really valuable person for the town to support being there as this working group. There'd be six people on that, they talked about a half a dozen, three to four hour sessions. And then they would report to the. Upper committee, which would be made of the mayors and some of the other key players. And then working on how we get this out, they want to have it wrapped up by October. So it's exciting, and I'm just hoping that we can make that happen. And again, I think Catherine would be a great fit for it, and I think that Catherine loves that kind of work and finds it gratifying. But anyway. If you're listening, Catherine. And the candidate workshop that the staff put together was awesome. It was really, really awesome, and we're going to post it on the website. If you know, anybody wants to know how the town of Frazier operates, each of the department heads did great presentations. Louis Gregory and I were the only two that were there, and Louis asked a lot of really good questions, I thought. Um, so it'll be great to have that accessible for other candidates as well as anyone that moves to town. Add a boys and girls to all the staff members that took up presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it.
Any other updates?
I have one, Mr. Mayor. On January the 14th, last Friday, I attended a a meeting that was is to address sedimentation buildup that's been detected in the Frazier River. We had representatives from Colorado Parks and Wildlife, representatives from the town of Frazier, I was the representative. James Shockie from the town of Winter Park, we had a representation from the from the county as well. Big picture, fishing is a the second most. Profitable tourism industry in Grand County, it's second only to skiing. It generates about 220 million dollars worth of revenue in Grand County. So protecting the fishing industry is is fairly important. And what they have found is is over the past several years, there's been more sedimentation spilling into the the Frazier River. This was not a meeting to really point fingers or anything, but they did refer to that most of the the sedimentation is coming from the major developments. You know, rendezvous, Rome, Grand Park and so forth. The issue revolves around the sediment, the sediment that's coming into the Frazier River. There's a an animal species, it's called the the model sculpin. The model sculpin becomes a a food source for trout, once they reach about 14 inches. So to have a strong trout population requires that we preserve the the sculpin population. They're behind Safeway, there's a a fish monitoring station, and they every year will go in and do fish counts in this. This span of the river there, and they've been doing this for 17 years. The results are actually pretty alarming. The average count for sculpin over those 17 years is about 250 a year, they've had as many as 550 in one year. And as low as about 120 in other years and so forth. In September of 2021, they counted 56.
Oh, dear.
Which is the lowest amount they've ever seen, and that caused Colorado Parks and Wildlife tremendous concern. There's also been a lot of reports from citizens in Winter Park and Frazier and so forth about heavy sedimentation in the river. This meeting was related to address that, to try to come up with some some ways that we can we can do this. And part of this is enforcement, part of this is erosion control and so forth. They list us some possibilities that we're going to be looking at. One of the struggles that we've had is when we've had reports that come to the town hall. You know, the only thing that we can do is report that to the state, the CDPHE or to the county. But the enforcement of that is is lagging, is like typically a warning letter is sufficient to to bring things in line. But but that's not always successful, so we're going to be exploring some different ways that we can take better advantage of this. One of the participants in that in that in that meeting was Johnny, who worked with Colorado Parks and Wildlife. I reached out to him, he is willing to come either virtually or come here, the town of Frazier. And maybe address that in a future board meeting to to kind of go over that material, the results, why that's a problem. The reason it's a problem is because sculpin live between the rocks and the cobble and the river. And they have a short lifespan of about three years. So sedimentation, sediment fills up their habitat and they they move on. He put it in a good perspective, he made a comparison to sedimentation that occurred in the. Essentially in the Colorado River from the Windy Gap reservoir to the junction with the Blue River. There's no model sculpt in that area anymore, and that it completely went away from the from the sedimentation. And we don't want that to happen here because that river is such an important, you know, amenity for for everyone here, not just the residents, but the visitors as well. So if you would like, Mr. Mayor, I would schedule a time that he can come and give that presentation. In the meantime, I'll be working with staff to address how we can we can maybe take better control of that. One of the options they talked about is there's a permit that's typically for communities that have, you know, a certain population density. We don't, we're not in that, the whole county's not in that, but there's one exception in the rules. It says if there's significant pollution and degradation of habitat, then they can do a that permit. Which gives a lot of authority to municipal government to take steps to. Better control. I'll be looking at something maybe in late February or March, then. For a date, like, thank you.
Thank, any other updates? One more, we have one more executive session. One more executive session, so once again, public, we're going to put everybody in the waiting room. And when we come back, we're basically going to adjourn, so I don't know if you want to stick around to hear us adjourn or not, but. That's what I also have emotion.
So I move to enter into executive session for discussion of a personnel matter under CRS, section 2464024. Section twenty-four six four oh two four F. I or L, L, I guess. And not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of the matter in open session. Town manager review, including town manager at Canada.
I have a second, second, sorry. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? And this one will not be an attorney client privilege, so it does need to be recorded.
Good night, Clark. Good night, Catherine. Good night, Russell.
Mr. Mayor, do you want me here or do you want me to exit? Would you like me to stay or go?
I don't. I don't care anyway. Uh, he could probably add some input because we've worked together so tightly over the past. Four or five months. Yeah.
It's up to you guys.
You want to stick around? I think so.
Sounds like Ed would like me to be.
One of the things we're gonna talk about.